So we're gonna do it a little differently today. I'm gonna call the school committee meeting to order as I'm standing because today we have our public hearing for the FY19 school budget. The only agenda item is the FY19 budget. So here's how we would like to do. First of all, all of you who are here, thank you so much for being here. We appreciate that you took the time to be here. We will have a presentation for those of you who are here. Some of you may have seen this before either on TV or if you attended our previous meetings. Some of the information here however will be different than what you have seen before. Budget season is always a hectic time and things change, things evolve. And some of the things that Cheryl will be sharing with us will be some positive changes since the last time. In fact, even last time when we presented the budget, there were some positive changes from the previous time. So she will speak to all those. So how we're gonna do this, Cheryl will do her presentation and then after that, we're gonna open it up to all of you. I know that a couple of you already signed up to comment, but this is a public hearing. If any of you who did not sign up, feel free to just let us know. Any question is good. Any comment is good. If they're related to the budget, even better. Let's just focus on that. But if, you know, if at any point you have questions, that's what we're here for. And remember that your questions not only help us better understand your perspectives, but also those folks who will be watching hopefully this meeting. They will hear your questions and they will be informed through your questions as well. So with that, I will turn it to Cheryl and I will, actually instead of making it formal, I will go grab a chair.
Thank you, Emery.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I do apologize, this is a little bit repetitive, but as we get later into the program, there are some changes, so stay tuned for those. Tonight, we are going to go over our FY18 accomplishments, our enrollment and our enrollment projections for class size and staffing, the budget assumptions that we made around the budget, our FY19 request for resources, and then our full budget request. And those are the pieces that we'll have, we'll be changing. And then we are gonna talk about net school spending comparisons and the preliminary local education association estimates for FY19. And then we do have a discussion on if we are not able to meet the budget parameters, what those reductions may look like. So, we are extremely proud of the work of our staff and students in the Granby Public Schools. Our entire school community is committed to excellence and equity for every student in every classroom, every day, and there is no doubt that Granby Public Schools is a great place to learn and grow. This year in particular, we are extremely proud of our focus, our sustained focus on social-emotional learning. We have continued to have our social-emotional learning program at Granby Junior/Senior High School. We have worked on our student support teams. We have continued to use our guidance and our social workers in support of social-emotional learning. And we have continued our implementation of peace builders as our social-emotional learning curriculum from K kindergarten all the way up to grade 12. We are very pleased this year that we have expanded our service learning and we have reintroduced our work-based learning program at Granby Junior/Senior High School. And we actually had some stories in the newspaper regarding the success of the work-based learning program for our students and the kinds of students that that program supports. And those are real success stories for us that we would like to see continue next year. We have had effective elementary interventions for students that are reading below grade level in math and reading. We continue to have our Title I support that program. We've also increased our supportive autism program for grades K through 3. And when we talk later in our discussion, we'll talk about some changes in special ed funding. And we also have restructured the student support services at Granby Junior/Senior High School so that students have immediate opportunity for support and aren't facing a closed door when they go down and need support, which had been the case in the past. So. And our other accomplishments that we're very proud of, we have maintained and actually grown our co-curricular activities at all levels. We have added co-op sport opportunities or athletic opportunities for our students. And we're maintaining our music and drama theater programs. We've also introduced art club and other activities for elementary students that have been very successful. So a bit about enrollment. Overall, you can see that at the height of our enrollment in about 2005, I think that is, 5-6, we had about 1,154 students was about the peak of our enrollment. And then you can see that we do have a decline, and that is not unique to Granby. We're seeing that decline across western Massachusetts. And so it is an issue that municipalities and towns in western Mass are having to deal with, and also in the rural parts of the state. So Cape Cod is having tremendous difficulty with enrollment, as is the suburbs around Lowell and some of the rural communities in the north and west. This is a slide that talks about the resident and school choice enrollment. So you can see that our resident enrollment makes up the majority of our enrollment in the Granby Public Schools. And the darker blue is the receiving school choice FTEs. So if you notice, in 2011, 2012, we certainly were the recipients of increased school choice students. And as you can see, we've been losing school choice in, and that is the result of a reduction in class teachers at the grade levels. So we weren't able to offer seats. A good example, last year was kindergarten. We had probably eight school choice applicants, but we were not able to open the third grade kindergarten, so we were not able to accept school choice. So this year, there's positive news on enrollment. We'll get to that in a minute. This is school choice enrollment trends. This is the difference between our receiving school choice and our sending school choice. So as you can see, when we had our highest enrollment figures back in 2011, we had our highest number of receiving school choice students into the district, and we were sending out our lowest numbers. Now you're seeing that trend go in an opposite direction, which is concerning, which affects our enrollment overall. And you're seeing where our receiving school choice is low, lower, and our sending school choice is, has been increasing. So the good news is that we have a confirmed increase of, not cases of any chicken pox or anything, but a confirmed increase of five new kindergarten students over FY18. During FY18, eight additional students enrolled in grade two, and those are resident enrollees, so they are added to our base, our Chapter 70 funding. During FY18, 74% of resident students are now attending the Granby Public Schools, and that is significantly up from 67% in FY17. And so the idea that if we invest in our schools and we can see that resident enrollment rise back up to 80%, even 83-84%, that comes with Chapter 70 funding, it comes with investment from the town side, and so we can start to see enrollment as revenue for us so that we can sustain the programs that we have. During FY18, there was a 4% decrease in Granby families using school choice options, so we're very proud about that. And at Granby Junior/Senior High School, the enrollment has stabilized from FY18 to our projected enrollment. At FY19, we should maintain 354 students. And that has not been the case. Over time, enrollment at the high school has been in decline, year after year. So this is the year, first year that we've seen in a while that it's been stable. So what does this mean for our projections and our staffing? So it means that our request has been to add a third grade kindergarten classroom. The 48 represents what we currently have confirmed enrolled, and 60 would be if all of our resident children register with us and the remainder of our school choice seats are filled. So we would have 60 students in kindergarten if we were fully enrolled. In grade one, we currently have three first grade teachers, so we would be continuing with that. We have 43 enrolled right now, and fully enrolled would be 46 students. And in grade two, we are anticipating, we have 46 students enrolled, and that's what we're anticipating. And in grade three, we are asking to add the third grade teacher for that large grade two this year that's moving up. And so the grade three total would be 56 students if it was fully enrolled. Right now, we're at 54. And then for grade four, we are anticipating going from 46 to 41 students, which would maintain the two classrooms. So fully enrolled, we would be at 47. Grade five, again, two classrooms with 46 students anticipated, and grade six, 48. And we are actually using the third grade six to fill one of the younger grades for the classroom teachers. So we're eliminating a sixth grade classroom and using that position elsewhere at the elementary level. And then at the high school, you can see that our enrollment is stable. That is good, good news for us, and so we're able to do some key programming around the 712 program at Granby Junior/Senior High School. So some of the creative things that we've been doing for staffing, we, at Granby Junior Senior High School, we moved to a shared schedule, meaning that all the students in grade seven through 12, the bell schedule is the same for them so that we could be more flexible with our staff and use them more flexibly. We have five teachers that are being used to teach in multiple content areas with their licenses. So we have dual certified teachers that are teaching math and history, for example. And we have staff this year that are seeking additional licensure to accommodate course offerings, and we thank the staff for that because that is certainly above and beyond the call. They're licensed in a certain area, and they see that the students have a need, let's say in chemistry, and they're going out and earning that certificate in chemistry so that we can offer the courses that students are asking to have. So I thank the staff for that. And my staff know who those folks are, so make sure you say thank you. So our budget assumptions, when we built the budget this year, we wanted to maintain a level service budget. So that means that if we were to open up the doors in September, we would have the exact same level of service for the students. So we would have the same classes, we would have the same course offerings, we would have the same support, we'd have the same interventions, we would have the same co-curricular, extracurricular activities. All of those things would be the same. There would be really no change in what students were able to receive as a result of a level service budget. We wanted to maintain our strong instructional program. We wanted to maintain appropriate class size, and that's a discussion ongoing with folks about what is an appropriate class size, depending on what grade level you're at and the kinds of courses that you're taking. We wanted to maintain interventions for struggling students. And part of that budget assumption is also to create interventions for students who are achieving at high levels. So students at the elementary level that may be in third grade but are reading at a fifth grade level. So starting to develop our interventions to support all of our learners. We wanted to maintain our co-curricular opportunities for students, and we wanted to support the continuum of services programming for social-emotional learning and autism. One of the things that the school committee has committed to is a continuum of services because what we were seeing is students that were struggling didn't have an option really to stay in Granby, and often it was an out-of-district tuition when if we had a continuum of services, we could provide support so that students could be successful. And so we've been working particularly with our special ed department on developing those programs and those interventions, and monitoring those, and working with parents and families to really have Granby Public Schools be a place where students can be successful. If it's a blended environment where they're not in the classroom all the time, maybe they have some pullout and some support so that they can stay with their peers and their We want to begin the improvement of technology capacity at Granby Junior/Senior High School, and there's a couple of reasons for that. East Meadow is going to be technology-rich because of the new project and the new building, so we're very excited about that. But I think we have to understand that that means we have students with really a vast set of technology skills that are gonna come up to a building that has computer labs. And they're gonna be used to being one-to-one in the computer and being in an asynchronous environment. And so we have to start thinking about planning for the infrastructure that can handle that kind of traffic at Granby Junior/Senior High School. We want to prepare certainly for the next generation computer-based MCAS testing. All students 100% will be online testing next year, so we have to be prepared for that. And we would like to be able to develop STEM coursework, and Stephen Sullivan, the principal, has already been awarded a grant to develop some STEM coursework. He's gonna talk about that on May 7th at the school committee meeting. So we do have some infrastructure upgrades that have to happen in order for that to be smooth and successful for students and staff. And then we were hoping to be able to provide central office support for technology integration, and really that's for David. David is it in technology, so there really is the need for some data management. With so much of our testing and student records and all of that being online and digital, there really is a need for us to have a data manager to help us work in data management, but then allow David to do the hardware and infrastructure and training of staff so that we're using technology appropriately and effectively. And then we were hoping to support curriculum development and implementation. So that will get us to the request, which is a little different than the last time, and I'll get into the details in a little bit. But the proposed request is 8,884, and that would be level service plus some additional requests that we had. And as you can see, the town has an in-kind of 2 million plus, so the total budget was And then there's a reduction of transportation. So the total net school spending for the school's request is $10,208,205. And the reason we do that, because we like to calculate the percentage that we're asking for over net school spending. Because we're gonna talk about that in a little bit, and what that means for Granby, and potentially why some of our families may be looking at other districts. So when Granby sets its town parameters for the school department, it sets it at minimum net school spending plus an override that happened in 2005. And that override is not adjusted for inflation, so it's strictly $305,979. And what that basically means is that Granby is saying that 3% over minimum net school spending is our parameter for you. And we have been saying as a school department, as a school committee for years, that our request is actually much over that. And there's been this debate and this sort of, you know, tension really, why are we always asking for more? Why are we always asking for more? Well, if we look at what other towns are spending over net school spending, I think you can see some of this discrepancy. When the town votes for the additional funding from town meeting floor, our net school spending goes up to 6.2%. So we're closer. And remember, our request this year is 8.5%. But if still, if you compare us to towns where, that are close to us, you can see at Hadley, 26.1% over net school spending, Belcher Town, 10.9, South Hadley, 19.4, Hatfield, 30.1, Ludlow, 29.4, Palmer, 10.4, and Pathfinder, our vocational partner, is 24.4% over minimum net school spending. So I think it's a talking point, it's a place for us to start the conversation about the parameter. Because we've been saying for quite a while that it's insufficient, and it isn't anyone's fault, we're not trying to blame anyone, but we need to sit down and have both the short-term solution, which is this year, but then a long-term solution so that we're not here having this conversation year after year after year. And so this is a slide that shows, Mark made me do this slide because it was a bar graph before, and he said it wasn't helpful, so I'm not sure this is any more helpful. But you can see that Granby is the, just about 6% over minimum net school spending. And you can see the other towns, Belcher Town is our closest at 10.9 if we went back to the other slide, and then probably Ludlow. And those are the towns and our neighbors. We're at, yes.
She got it.
She got it. So a little bit of pressure on the budget this year, really from the federal level. We are seeing an elimination of Title II-A, which is our professional development grant, and it also pays for a class reduction portion of a teacher's salary. So we are seeing the elimination from the federal government of $19,226. We're anticipating Title I will be about the same. We're anticipating II-40 will be the same. Our early childhood, we're anticipating the same, and our Department of Public Health, we're anticipating the same. We did make a reduction in school choice because our senior class is a very large class for school choice, so we have to replace all of those students before we make any revenue based on school choice. So we anticipate a reduction in school choice. And we are anticipating unfortunately, a reduction in circuit breaker, and that is due to a change in the students and their tuition, but it's also due to a change in the reimbursement rate that the state has been talking about. So this year, in FY18, there was going to be a reduction from 75 to 65% for circuit breaker. That would have been $67,000 for Granby, which is a significant part of our program. You could equate that to a teacher in a little bit, a teacher in a para even. So there was a lot of lobbying done, and thank you to the school committee. Calls were made, letters were made, we sent emails, and the legislature did vote for 72% of circuit breaker to be reimbursed this year. But we're very concerned that next year, for FY19, the struggle is still real, and they're still debating the circuit breaker reimbursement. So those are things that affect the budget for us, that are really out of our hands, although we do everything we can to advocate for the funding. So our revenue estimates, I'm very excited that the override is going to include this year, after the joint meeting with the finance committee and the select board, an additional $200,000. So that's a very good first step for the town of Granby and certainly for the school department. It is however, another one time, so it addresses the short term, but we really need to think about how can this be built into the budget long term so that we're not having this dilemma year after year after year. So with all of that being said, and some other changes that happened with special education tuition, you do hear us talk often about the deficit to the town parameter or the gap. It's really just the difference between what we're asking for and what we think we need to run the school department effectively, and what that very minimum town parameter is. And so with the additional $200,000 and some changes I'm gonna go over, that deficit is That's down from $682,000 about two months ago, or a month and a half ago. So we're making progress, so that's good, but we still have a little bit to go. So some additional budget adjustments that have been made, so we have the town parameter change of $200,000. Oops, I left off a zero. My apologies. The house ways and means increased the per-student allocation, so Granby receives an additional Special education between when we presented the budget to the joint meeting and now, we have had several tuition changes, and that's very normal. This year, it happens to be in our favor, which is a good thing. Some changes like we had tuitions finalized, we had IEP signed, so there's been a change in placement. We've had collaborations with the Department of Children and Youth Services who have come in and stepped in and provided support for families. So five really significant changes have come in, and the result has been $972,232 of savings. So we are able to reduce that deficit even more.
$97,000.
Sorry, $97,000. What did I say?
$972,000.
$972,000. That would be awesome.
We could just run out of it.
We don't even have to meet. Sorry. So to get the deficit as low as possible, because we recognize the constraints on the town, and we recognize the constraints in the school department, school committee, the leadership team met and decided to once again take off the shared curriculum director and the data manager. So that is how we begin to get down to the $297,000 total deficit. So I'm gonna talk about some potential reductions right now. My true hope is that the town, as they have in the past, have come together to support the schools at town meeting. And I think the request at $297 is going in the right direction, certainly, but we were charged by the joint boards to discuss the list of reductions, and so the leadership team did come together. And I apologize, there may be staff here that it affects, and I haven't had an opportunity to get out to talk to everybody, so with that being said, I'd be happy to stay afterwards and discuss with anybody here. So there is, these are the lines that we would be reducing out of. The superintendent school committee travel and office supplies. We traveled to the joint MAS-C superintendent MAS-S conference, and also traveled to the superintendent conference. Those are eliminated, along with some reductions in office supply lines. We would eliminate the team leaders in the three schools. That funding was in the budget for the reduction offset for Title II-A. So we had been hoping to use that for our ILT stipends, our instructional leadership teams that have been developed, and that we use Title II-A to pay for the stipends, so that's being eliminated potentially. The technology infrastructure upgrade of $41,000, this is an ongoing request, and it is an E-rate matching request, and every year, it seems like we take it out, and so we cannot capitalize on an E-rate matching funding. So we end up losing more like...
That's the smaller percentage of it. It can be up to 60% matched.
Right. So we end up losing anywhere between probably 15 to 30, 15 to...
The match is actually larger than that number. We would get more in E-rate than we would from that number.
So over 40, we're losing. The leadership team discussed reductions at Granby Junior/Senior High School, two. It wouldn't be two full-time, it would be .5 in multiple content areas. I should back up and say that none of these reductions are anything that the leadership team or the superintendent feel would not impact negatively the programs that we offer students. We, as the leadership team, came in and did a lot of work around efficiency... We, as the leadership team, came in and did a lot of work around efficiency, caseload analysis, class size analysis, reworked schedules, and got us to a place where a level service budget would sustain programming. These cuts get at the core of what we offer kids. And so these are very difficult and painful, not that others haven't been, but there's nowhere else to go except in the core of what we offer kids. There's a .25 reduction in instrumental music, and that would mean a reduction in instrumental music instruction at both elementary level and at Granby Junior/Senior High School. We would eliminate JV sports, which as you know is integral to most schools and school districts as kids are transitioning, many of our middle school students, because we don't have middle school sports, are allowed to play JV. So we've eliminated middle school sports, and now this is JV sports. We would eliminate three clubs and the advisors at Granby Junior/Senior High School, we would eliminate the assistant athletic director, as that position would not be needed with no JVs. And then we would eliminate the grade-one teacher and stay with two teachers. Potentially, class sizes at grade-one could reach 24 per class, which is, I would never recommend, but with, I just would not recommend that. The special education contingency, there's a lot of discussion about, why do you have contingencies in the budget? The special ed contingency is used for unanticipated small requests or tuition adjustments. Often, a student will come to us and need changes to the FM system, or to hearing devices, or teachers need training. If we have a new student come to us, oftentimes we use the contingency line to support students in those smaller purchases. So we would eliminate that, well, we would reduce that contingency, currently it is $15,000. And so that gets us to the entire $297,439, which is the difference between the town parameter and our budget request.
I have kind of new to town, so I don't know if I need to stand up, but my name's Michael Procher. Couple of questions regarding the budget cuts. The $1,800 for JV sports, clubs, and music reduction seem to hit people outside of the STEM, and I think those are also an integral part to a whole education of a child. And you start cutting those, now you're not fostering any growth going into your RSE programs. The clubs, I don't know if you're cutting them just because of budget restraints, or no interest.
Right.
I mean, there's two different reasons, if there's no interest in the clubs, okay, makes sense to cut them, but if there's interest, $1,800 doesn't seem like a lot of money. And then the athletics, I think that's important, because not all kids are good in band or other clubs, and sports is a great, in a positive way, to foster team development and self-esteem, which helps in their educational development.
Absolutely.
And I just think, I'm kind of just concerned that you're cutting the JV program and reducing the music and some of these other things, I just, I think, important.
We are too. You know, as I said, none of these are reductions that we think will not, not negatively impact kids. You know, we've gotten to the place in the budget where everything we do is going to affect the kids. There is very little discretionary resource in the budget anyway. And so now we're at the place where we are impacting classrooms, teachers, positions, and extracurricular, co-curricular athletics. It's not a place that we would like to be, nor do we recommend. But if the town parameter is what it is, and we're forced to do that, and our option, we have to have this out there so people understand what reductions mean.
I wanted to piggyback on what you said about that, and we're looking at school choice, and you know, that gap is getting smaller and smaller, so you start cutting those programs, we could potentially lose Granby residents to other districts, and other districts certainly will not be sending their children to us. I'd also like to speak to the grade-one teacher, class size 24 in a class is just absurd. It's absolutely absurd to expect two teachers to meet. All those varied needs of six and seven-year-olds in a class is that big, that's just absurd.
So, any other thoughts or questions on the budget?
We have a couple of individuals who want to speak in, wait. We have Robin.
I just would like to point out the fact that over the past 10 years, if less, that 29 teachers have been cut here in Granby. We are down to bare bones of what we can offer children. And as Colleen said, if you cut a first-grade teacher, and that is an essential, essential learning time, that's where the math, the reading are so important, and if there are that many children, a teacher is not, will do the best she can, or he can, but they are not going to be able to meet the needs of all of those children. Because you've got children at the top, children in the middle, and those children at the bottom. Those children in the middle are the ones who suffer the most. I just want to, you know, make sure everybody is aware that, you add an additional two, that's 27 teachers in the past few years. I don't think another town can lay claim to that.
Yeah.
Yep. I have a question on the student that's going to Smith Oak.
Yes.
Could somebody please explain why we have that high fee for one student?
Sure.
Thank you.
So vocational education, students are, in the state of Massachusetts, entitled to. We have a partner program, a partner vocational school with Pathfinder, and they offer several Unfortunately, they do not offer two programs that students have decided that they want to pursue as vocations. One is plumbing.
Do they have that in college also?
I don't know what that question means.
No, wouldn't they also offer, you could go to college and take those courses?
Not for vocational, no, they could go to a trade school.
First one you could, potentially, right?
Yep.
But here's the thing.
So by law, because they chose to go to there, because they're not offered at Pathfinder?
Correct.
By law?
Yes.
We have to pay for them to get bused over there?
Yes.
Their parents don't have to bring them?
No.
No.
Because usually, like, if you go to Springfield Schools, or any other school, Eastland, Menlo, Trigby, you have to bus the child there, bring them there.
Well, this is, this is verse of the...
I know what school choice is.
Chapter 74.
Yeah.
So I think we shared the entire, entire law, we shared some interpretation, we got some legal opinion. So chapter 74 says, the town is responsible for any child that wants to go to a vocational school for something that is not offered in the public school district, and we're not a vocational school to begin with.
Right.
And when the child wants to go somewhere else, we always have some conversations. We started this work-study, what do you call it?
Work-study program, workplace learning.
Workplace learning program, and you know, if in the future there are, there's some opportunity to really get, get any student to say, hey, you know, I want to do half of it in the academic setting, and, or I want to go half the day somewhere else, we have that opportunity. But for vocational schools, chapter 74 says that the child can go wherever they want to go, just like school choice, but in a different way. You know, just if they want to go somewhere else, they do. I think one thing that is somewhat missed in this conversation is this, if somebody had come to us and said, you know what, I want to go to a vocational school, and Pathfinder is offering it, the child would go there, and we would not even have this conversation. And it seems like we are in, under this impression that students who go to Pathfinder, they go there for free. They don't. I mean, we have to send our children there because they want vocational education, and then we pay for their education as well. And as you saw, vocational schools are never cheap to begin with. And so when you compare the cost of those students going, and by the fact that we don't really have an agreement with the Smith Vocational School District, there is, there is a little bit of difference. The bigger addition probably is that transportation piece that we have to offer. So that, those are the things that we, you know, we sometimes don't expect, don't anticipate, and we ideally would have some of those vocations, vocational education offered at Pathfinder, but if they don't offer it, we have to do it by law.
Unfunded mandates.
Yeah. Yeah, the last time we had some, some nice conversations at our last joint meeting with the Select Board and the Finance Committee, and as you said, there are a lot of unfunded mandates, and you know, somebody comes up with some rule, regulation law, and then we have to abide by that. Same thing goes with our special education programs. You know, there is, there is typically a lot of questions or consternation at times around how much tuition is paid, or transportation is paid, that's by law. And that special education is about 15 and 1/2% of our budget. And of that, of that amount, 66% is amount that we are paying for institutions outside our district. Here's the thing, I want to emphasize some things that we sometimes take for granted because we've been talking about these things, and we don't emphasize it enough. About three years ago, we made a very conscious decision that we were going to invest in social-emotional learning programs. And the idea was this, if we are seeing all these variations and fluctuations in special education programs around social-emotional learning and otherwise, what can we do to strengthen the programs that we have in our district? To be able to either provide those services to the children in our district, and at the same time maybe look at those children that have to leave our district and bring some of them back. So one of the students that Cheryl did not specifically mention is coming back next, next school year, and this is not the first student that is coming back. I don't, I don't have the exact count, but since we started this program, we have seen students coming back. Why? Because they want to be in their own district, they want to be where they are familiar, they want to be with their own friends, they want to be in their own environment. So they're coming back, but the biggest thing is that we are able to offer the program that they, they need. Their families are making the decision to return them to, to this district. It's not really by force or anything, they're coming back. The other thing that is really important for us to remember and emphasize is the fact that, I believe this is the first year, we have more students in our district at this point in time than we had when we started this school year. I think the total number is, what, total number? Since day one of this school year versus today, we have a lot more students. We are, we have those projections for class sizes that we are looking at. Some of those numbers are likely to change because we already are hearing from families who would like to send their children here. The other number that Cheryl mentioned several times before, so now we almost internalize it that I want to emphasize, one indicator that we were looking at was what percentage of Granby-based school-age children are choosing to go outside the district? And that number was increasing, they were, you know, as you saw, school choice, outgoing school choice was increasing, and incoming school choice was, was declining at the same time. We are still net school choice in, but that gap was, was closing in. We are seeing now, from a level of about 67% of Granby resident school-age children choosing to come to Granby public schools, we are now seeing that number at 74-plus percent. And we are projecting that that number will increase. Based on the, based on the communications that we are, we have with those families that are moving in town, we are projecting that that number is likely to increase. So these are all good signs. And that's why we've been, the last so many years, focusing on what we are trying to do, and how we are really trying to align it with our strategic objectives, as opposed to one-time tactical things to save the day. We have done a lot of that, and you know, Robin's point is, is testament to that, that, you know, when we could not get the funding that we needed, we had to cut costs. And there are, you know, that's, that's something that we think about, and I'm going to get to that. What changed the last couple of years, especially this year, and since, you know, my friend Glenn Sexton is here, I just want to acknowledge that cooperation that is, that is very important to all of us. We are now having conversations to say, this is not about the schools, this is not about town, this is really about, about the entire town of Granby, and schools are part of this town. How do we really find a solution that will benefit everyone? How do we really work on this all together and find solutions to the problem, as opposed to making it look like we are two separate entities within the same town? And we are, you know, pulling at our own ends, and it always seemed like we are debating, or there is tension. So this year we see some, some great changes to that, and we're going to have one more upcoming joint meeting with the Finance Committee and, and the Select Board. And some of these good news that you have seen today, we're not really shared with them because these are recent, some of them are recent changes. So what, what else can we do in the meantime? We're still talking about short-term, short-term solutions to the program, I mean, to the problem. The problem being the budget deficit that we've been experiencing for several years There's, there are two ways to really address any, any deficit problem, or at least at the very simplistic level. If you have a deficit, you can look at your revenue, you can look at your expenses, and we've been looking at our expenses for a long time now, and that translates to a lot of positions cut. Robin said about 25 full-time equivalent positions, or 25 positions have been eliminated, and you can see that. You can really look at, I always give the example of yearbooks. You can look at any yearbook from so many years ago, and look at the yearbook from the most recent year, and you see that so many spots are missing from the teacher's pages. This is not really a school district that is about to disappear. We are seeing a lot of people moving in, we are seeing a lot of new homes coming up, we are seeing a lot of children really moving with their families. We also are looking at those numbers, the enrollment numbers, and that should tell us that the capacity in this district is not really where we are right now. This district was able to handle a capacity of about 11 to 1,200 students at one point in time. Chances are, we're not going to see that, more than likely. But we are able to really focus on a number that is much higher than where we are today. A lot of factors got us to where we are, and even though the fluctuations, and those were, I would say, probably normal fluctuations started around 2006 or so, the real decline started around 2010. And we have seen a couple of things happen around that time. One was the message that a lot of folks got, because of all these, all these seemingly tense conversations that were taking place, one was related to the school building project. A lot of folks took that, took that as a sign that we were not willing to invest in education in this town. Number two was the private school that is in our town, and provided a lot of, a lot of scholarships, in some cases probably pretty close to nothing, and attracted a lot of students. As of last year, we were looking at 51 students that were going to our, our private friends on the other side of the town. So when you put all those things together, obviously, we have seen all these declines. Now we are looking at some stabilization, and the numbers going higher. We are seeing some students from other towns coming to us and expressing an interest. We are obviously seeing some impact from this school building, a lot of folks are seeing that, there's a lot of investment in town, and they want to be part of it. So how do we build on that? And that is the second half of our equation. We have to look at our... We have to look at our short-term options and short-term solutions to make sure that we remain stable and we find a way to continue to grow in terms of our enrollment, but also there's a long-term solution. Again, the biggest thing that came out of our conversations with the Select Board and the Finance Committee was that this is not about a single department. This is about all of the departments, all of the services that we are receiving in this town. And any town needs those services, and any town will see that the cost of those services will likely to go up. So we have to look at the way to counter that increase on the cost side. That means we have to find ways to invest in different things in this town. It's going to be a long-term conversation and long-term investment, but how do we really focus on economic development in Granby? And how do we really start bringing some businesses into the town so the pain or the burden of some of the investments that we've been talking about doesn't only fall on the residents who are paying their property taxes, but we build on this business base that will allow us to do more without relying on the residents only. And those are the tough conversations that we're having. To go back on a last note, to your point, the only reason, or the main reason, we are showing those reductions is because there's always that question that is, what if we go to the town meeting? And the town meeting is the only place where appropriations happen? And folks say, no, we're not going to really fund that amount that you're showing as a gap. So we are almost obligated to look at what is and what is not there to make sure that we are accounting for that gap just in case we don't get those funds. Otherwise, I think we are all on the same page as you, I think it would be everyone, that we do believe that those activities, seemingly small numbers, have incredible impact on the children. They're enriching them, their lives, and they have a lasting impact, sometimes, you know, sometimes probably more than what they learn in their classrooms. That's, you know, that's where they find themselves. So it's not with the intent of really looking at those reductions and saying they're coming. It's because we need to be realistic when we stand in front of the town meeting, and if they ask, we have to show them where the impact is going to be felt. And as Cheryl said, there is really, and this is something that Jen mentioned a few meetings ago, there is really no reasonable cut on the curriculum side that we can look at. So anything that we need to do on that side, on the education side, on the extracurricular, co-curricular activities that we'll look at, it's not because they're reasonable that they're easy, it's just because if we find ourselves in those situations, you know, they may be unfortunately on the wrong side of our budget. But not with the intent of really reducing any one of those. You're right, I mean, JV sports, you know, for a few thousand dollars, clubs that probably have many students attending for a few thousand dollars. And, you know, you get into those conversations, you're absolutely right that they have a tremendous impact for that small amount of investment.
Absolutely. Now, I came from the Gateway School District, and we wrestled this a lot. It wasn't just one town, we were dealing with six towns, virtually seven. Out of curiosity, what is the school budget percentage as a, of the total town? I know up in Hilltown, we ran between sixty, sixty-five percent.
Isn't it sixty-seven percent of the town budget?
I believe our budget is about twenty million dollars.
Sixty-seven percent of the town budget?
Yeah, it's almost three quarters of the town budget.
Is it three quarters? Okay.
It's almost not that high, but it's close.
When you look at the total town budget and you looked at the services at school, and you're right, you know, you are balancing the needs of the whole community. The school is part of the town, and I think it's, we've got to work together. But at the same time, if you're trying to keep kids in the school district not improving a high school that hasn't changed in the last thirty-five years, or cutting all these other things are only going to be more of a detriment to the town than a benefit. And it's almost like you're shooting yourself in the foot going forward, again, looking at the long-term strategic goals. You want to set yourself apart from everyone else, or at least say, okay, this is the place you want to be, and we're going to invest in the town in those long-term strategic goals so our kids are coming out as strong and as prepared as possible.
Yeah. And also, you know, that gives us the opportunity to, you know, to bring up another topic that's been discussed, is, you know, what happens if we ship our students somewhere else? But that's the same thing as, first of all, no one really wants to regionalize in our area. And we brought this up, we brought this up several times, and the school committee actually is at a point where we are willing to go out and do a study or a research through the, what is it, Massachusetts?
Association of Regional Schools.
Association of Regional Schools, just to show that, you know, even with some research that we're going to pay for, if anybody's willing to, we can show that we have been having these conversations. They're not always happening in front of the camera, the superintendents are always in touch, the administrative team, they're in touch. In fact, I, you know, sometimes have conversations with some other school committee members from elsewhere. We don't have a partner right now, we don't have a partner, even if we wanted to. But think about it this way, and that's the reason why the net school spending numbers become important. We often find folks coming to us and saying, hey, you know, don't compare us to those towns, we're not a Walter Town, we're not Hadley, we're not, okay, that's good. But the reality is, if our students have to go somewhere, they're going to go to those school districts. And if you look at how much they are spending per student, they are spending a lot more than we do. And assume that something happens tomorrow, we just shut down all these schools or the high school at the very least, and we ship our students. There's a transportation cost, first of all, to ship them farther out, that's one. But number two, and more importantly, they're not going to take us out of, you know, charity, they're going to ask us to be partners. And that partnership will likely involve paying per pupil rates similar to theirs. It may be slightly lower, but still it's going to be higher than ours. So we have to really consider these factors when we are talking about any one of these scenarios. And the school district, I mean, our school committee has been open to having any one of these conversations for years. We also said that we do believe that our district is strong and can stand on its own feet, and then we have to grow it, and we have a lot of capacity, a lot of potential, and we're seeing the dividends being paid on that. But we did not say anyone, we did not tell anyone that, hey, you know, you brought an option and that option is not to be considered at all. We always want it to be as transparent as possible and consider any option that anybody brought up so that everybody sees we are looking at all the options. At the end of the day, what is important to all of us, I'm assuming, is the children. How do they get the best that they should get? That's important to us. We have, you know, our school district, six hundred-plus students who are Granby residents. How do they get the best that they should get as our children? And that's what we're focusing on, in any which way that can be provided, that's what we're focusing on. So, yeah, it's a tough conversation, and the conversation, I don't think is going to get any easier. But as you can see, we're still talking about large amounts of number, but those large sums are getting a little smaller. And we are trying to do that without really having to reduce the number of folks who are actually making the school district go. Our educators, our staff members, the services that we have, how do we get there? That's what we're working on, and hopefully slowly we're getting there. Glenn?
Glenn Sexton. Just somebody who's aware to it, and I'm sure most people are, the town really brings in so much money, and it's based on taxes and fees and so on and so forth. And that's what we have a budget for. And I don't think it's saying that anybody doesn't want to fund the school as much as possible, and even if more than we could. But if the revenue in our town's not there, that's where you've got to make, decide what we can and can't do. And I know Emery was talking about earlier, and that's one thing that we're trying to look at, is how do we bring in more revenue into our town? So these conversations in the future, we don't have to have because we'll have that money too, if you will, spread around where we need to. And I think that's the trouble we're faced with right now, is how to, you know, weather the storm right now, get past this, and hopefully, you know, better days are ahead of us. And as Emery's talked about too, and I look at, is that, yes, people are moving into town, we got a brand-new elementary school and middle school, the kids are moving in here. Well, we've got to find a way to keep those kids here. Because what happens as those kids get older, and now they get into high school and talk about sports and stuff like that, and those things aren't there, who's keeping them here? So if we're finding a way to bring the families here, we've got to figure a way to keep them here as well. And it's not an easy task. This is something not just us, but a lot of towns and cities are facing. And again, we only have so much money in the pot, and to figure out where it's going to go is tough. And I give you guys, you know, I know, I look at this and you have, it's gone down a few hundred thousand dollars since the last time I've seen it. And it's seeing it, you know, it's nice it went down, but on the same token, it's scary looking at what went down. And those are real impacts, and it's definitely something that we're going to struggle with, I think, just as a community, to figure out how to make it work.
But also, the selectmen came to your last meeting with money to help balance this budget and bring your deficit down so much.
That was from Ebron Wall.
I know, he wrote the personal check. But that, but that shows their sincere effort and caring about what happens to the school and the future of Granby, because the schools are the future of Granby, because without the schools, you are not going to have the people moving into town forty years ago when we bought our house and moved to town, it's over forty years, but we came to this town because of the reputation of the schools, and we had small children. So, you know, that's what brings them here, we need to keep them here.
I'm not a resident of Granby, but I'm finishing my fourteenth year as instrumental music teacher here in the schools, and my son did attend as a school choice student previously. I want to start with a couple of thank yous. The school committee and administration have been wonderful at really supporting the arts and looking at creative ways to make things work for us here in the school, and the students have had incredible opportunities here in Granby. And I've been blessed to be here for these fourteen years. Although I don't live here, I feel like a Granbyite, I say. And it's something that I've gotten involved in the school, gotten involved in the community. And I think those twenty-five teachers, twenty-three, twenty-five teachers that we've lost, not just lost teachers in the classrooms, we've lost people doing things in our community, providing for our students in other ways, whether it be through community sports, Lions Club, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the youth sports and organizations, those people are leaving from that as well. The other thank you I was going to say was I was glad that that turned off, but of course it turned back on, so it's hard for me to hear what the fans plan to have blowing in here. But what I wanted to say about the budget is, one of the things that's invisible in the numbers that have come through are the things that disappear but no one ever sees. Within the last three years, just in the instrumental music and music clubs, there was fifty-five hundred dollars for the programs to purchase materials and equipment and repairs that was provided through the budget, which is gone. And the administration is aware of that, and what the music parents and our booster clubs, so I can only speak from my personal experience, but what those organizations used to do, to purchase things to supplement the program, is now on the backs of those organizations and the teachers and the clubs to provide those basic pieces of equipment. And I don't think that's something that the community as a whole is fully thinks about as they go through. If I want to buy a piece of music for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary parade that's coming up, I have to fundraise to buy that. So all of those things that you see. And also, what most of the community thinks of as my job is the Memorial Day Parade, the musical presentations, the morning band, the concerts in the evening, has nothing to do with the job that I do here as in the school. Those are all out-of-school things that I do and receive a small stipend for, so I'm not paid at a professional rate. I'm paid at a stipend for those types of things. So instead of having someone come in and being paid, even if we do an extra supervision, I think it's twenty-five dollars an hour sometimes, we used to be reimbursed, it doesn't come out to that. So I'm here, as many of our other teachers are and other paraprofessionals are here, I'm here an hour before the start of my workday, working every day throughout the year and the evening and weekend, expectations. So those are things that aren't reflected within the operational budget that, as I said, I can only speak to my own experiences, but I know that's happening everywhere else, and it's happening in our administrative teams and our paraprofessionals and our support staff as well, and I'm sure throughout the other departments in the school. But it has been something that makes it very difficult for us to observe. The extras are disappearing, we're just trying to raise money to pay for the curriculum expenses. They're not frills. And there's, unfortunately, there's a lot of things that the school is offering as curriculums that we're paying for in other ways.
And to speak to that also, Greg, the booster clubs and what they do for the sports, maintaining the grounds and things, because unfortunately, that part of the budget had to be cut, if I'm wrong, you know, correct me. But I'm sure it's the parents of the kids involved in sports who are helping to take care of the fields in the back of the high school. So there's another one of those things that people don't see that unfortunately has had to disappear.
Greg, you make a good point too, and I think what happens that, you know, things that got cut three years ago, people forget about it unless it directly impacted you. And as you talked about over the past, you know, how many years, twenty-five teachers or twenty-five positions have gone away, unless that directly impacted you, you don't remember it happened three years ago or four years ago, but reality is, it's real. And if we just keep on cutting and cutting and cutting, eventually, you get a lot of places to cut. So I think it's important that, you know, again, we find a way to somehow, some way, you know, make it work. And it is, I know when I moved here, you know, twenty years ago, that was one of the reasons why we moved here, because of the school systems. And, you know, not just being on the Select Board, but also, I'm a, you know, I'm a member of the town. And those are, you know, a lot of different things are important. And, you know, I stress that too, you know, one of the reasons I'm here tonight, because I want to hear what's going on as far as the schools, because it's an important part of the town, it really is. So, you know, and I stress that to people, because I've seen over the years, having kids in school, the cuts that are made, and like you said, you forget about it. And somehow, some way, it seems like some way, someone's got to pick that up, and people don't realize that. And you have a field committee that's made up of some of the, you know, parents and teachers and other people that go out there and, you know, get the fields ready, you know, for the spring sports and stuff like that. If it's not for those volunteers, that doesn't happen. So, I mean, those are things that we've got to remember, and that, you can only do that so much.
And I feel like sometimes twenty percent of my job or my hours that I spend is fundraising to pay for my own job and the supplies that I need simply to work with the students. So, and it adds up, and it's worthwhile at the end, we see the impact it has. So, and like I said, mine's in the performing arts, that's where I see it most, but I see it on the sports courts and fields, see it in our Hope Club, our academic presentations, the Honor Society, you know, it makes it worthwhile, but it does add up. So, thank you, bud, thank you for what you're doing.
So, I know you guys all know this, but one way of looking at it is this, what we keep on talking about, the net school spending, is basically based on what the state says the town has to spend on education. And when we talk about- And when we talk about spending beyond that, one easy way of doing that, if you go to the State Department, State Department, Department of Education website, in fact, say Massachusetts Department of Education, school profiles, you're gonna find all the school related data in there. And if you look at what their minimum required amount was, and then click the Google and find a piece of news from their town meetings or wherever they decided their school budget would be, then look at the difference, how much more they, you know, they spend on it. Sometimes they spend because they can, I mean, there is that. But some of the conversations, the tough conversations that we've been having, they can be handled in a way that we're trying to handle this year. Having some earlier conversation, trying to see what's available across the town to really, uh, weather the storm in a way, because we are going through this tough time and how to really get to the point where we can then self-sustain. And it was a theme last year, the self-sustaining was the theme last year. It is again a theme this year. Hopefully, what we are seeing this year is the beginning of something. And as the numbers are going up and we see those numbers going up even more, as you all know, a good chunk of that funding from the state is based on the number of students that we have. Just a quick note on that one, since all these conversations sometimes turn into school funding, education sessions, but let's say this year we have a hundred, I'm just making it up, the expectation is okay, next year we should have so much more money because we are gonna get a hundred new students. The state, in its wisdom, just looks at, looks at the previous year's numbers to fund you for the following year. So, there's that one-year gap, that one-year lag. And sometimes those are, you know, those are tough differences to explain, but whatever incident we are seeing this year, whatever happened by October first, we're gonna be able to see the full impact of the students being in our district. Whatever happened after October first, we're not going to see the impact of those, of the students for a while. And whatever we are anticipating for next year, from a state perspective, those are immaterial for now until we report those numbers to the state next year. So, that is the, that is the challenge as well. Sometimes you have more students in your district and you have to really provide the services for more students with whatever you are given based on the numbers of the Any, anything else? So, a few things that I wanna add, and I wanna thank the administrative team and our superintendent, our teachers for. The school district has been very creative in trying to find different ways of providing maximum service, maximum education to our students with what we have. One of them is that work-learning program, probably I'm butchering it again, just keep on calling it work-study, but, you know, it's allowing some of the students to go and experiment with some professions that they aspire to have in the future. That's something that we created this year and is already attracting students. The other thing that happened just last week, with some changing and tweaking of our school requirements, our graduation requirements as far as credits, we were able to free up some credits that can be now used for additional classes. And many of them are likely to be electives that our students are looking for. These seem to be pretty trivial in any conversation. And some of the things that I shared earlier about the impact of the school building or the private school, they were not really unknown. We heard a few things, but they were not really, well, they were not really known, I should say, but we heard some conversations around those. But as years go by, you bump into those individuals who chose to take their students out of our district and you have these conversations and you realize that the impact was beyond what we anticipated. And what they were looking at were what we consider those simple things, maybe a club that was only a few thousand dollars that, you know, that was important to them. Sports, we don't really, you know, sometimes we say, well, maybe we can just do without sports, but a lot of families tell us that they are moving to other towns because they care about certain sports. That's why we started these cooperative approaches to sports, so our students can do anything from ice hockey to skiing to, I don't know if we're doing football anymore, but we are football. So, any sport that is not necessarily in Granby, our students can still go and do those. We are trying to provide some of the things that are not in our district through digital means. So, we had initiated this virtual high school several years ago, and there are still quite a few that we are offering in our district. But what seems to be small compared to many other districts that we can find about, that forty-seven thousand dollars that we talked about, that actually will help create the backbones for us to be able to allow students in our district to use the internet to reach out and do certain things that will enrich their classroom environment and do different things. So, that's why, I think you just said it, that when we look at last year and compare it to this year, hey, you know, it's, maybe it's not that much, but when you go back a few years and just look at the impact of all that amount and all those individuals who were lost to our district, the impact is incredibly large and we have to be mindful of that. Walter's taking a lot of notes, so that's a good thing.
I just wanted to add, I went with, yeah, I went with Cheryl last week to Danahill with four of the students from high school. And we got to meet with our state representatives and our state senator. And hearing the four students talk about these cuts on the way to Boston and on the way home, I have been thinking about those kids every single night, talking about what it was like coming to school for the past several years on the first day of school to find out which one of their teachers were, lost their job. And the mental anguish that that, that they shared with us, sharing the fact that ninety-nine percent of our technology is donated with our state leaders. And hearing them speak so eloquently, it was just, it was a heartbreaking moment, but it was also so encouraging because these young women spoke. You know, people are watching TV about the Parkland students, Granby students sounded an awful lot like that, fighting for their school. And they're kinda sick of doing it. They shouldn't have to. But hearing them advocate and speak in such a way, they were so educated about what's going on in their school, they are so invested, we should be so proud of these kids. And every year, we lose sight of those stories, of those kids. Every year, it gets lost in this vacuum of budget. And the headlines about our schools shouldn't be about how many cuts we're making, it should be about these amazing kids and what they're going on to do when they leave here. You know, we still have kids getting into Ivy League colleges. We still have kids going to school on full scholarships. You know, we have a lot to be so proud of, but it's constantly getting lost in this and we can't tell our story the way that we want because we're getting caught up on this minuscule amount. And I, and I understand that the pie isn't big enough and we need to grow, and we've had lots of conversations around economic development in our town. And that's great, but we need a short-term solution. We have to get through this little bit. There is light at the end of the tunnel, but we really need to make a conscious decision as a town whether or not we are going to continue to educate kids in Granby or not. Because this middle road stuff has gotta stop. This is where, this is, people's lives are hanging in balance. And I just wanted to share that. It's a shame.
Any other questions? Okay, so our next steps. We will not vote for a budget tonight. We have a few more things that we're looking into that could change. And we have, we found out last night or the night before, we have one more joint meeting coming up, so we didn't wanna really make a decision before that. So, we're gonna approve our budget at one of our upcoming meetings. Depending on the timing of that joint meeting, we're gonna be able to do it within the next week or ten days, but we have to do it before the, before the town meeting. And after that, whatever comes out of it and whatever the final numbers are, it's gonna be communicated. You're gonna hear it, but it's gonna be probably in the news anyway, but we're gonna communicate it on social media outlets that we have. And I believe all the documents that we have shared so far, they're posted at our website. So, those of you who are here and those of you hopefully watching, if you go to the school district's website, you can find the budget-related documents under the business office. And then you will see the budget, the fiscal years, and then you can select any one of those years and look at those. If you have any questions in the meantime, we are all available via email, you can send to one of us. If you send it to all of us, we can't respond as a group, but we can pick someone to respond to your questions. If you have questions, you can post it at the school committee Facebook page, if you are on Facebook. If not, probably the, one of the best things to do for anyone, and there's a guaranteed twenty-four-hour return for your, for your call, you can call the superintendent's office and she will call you back within twenty-four hours with whatever information is available, and don't hesitate to do that. With that...
Do you have a date for the joint meeting?
The joint meeting, we don't. We have to, we have to decide on that date.
But town meeting is May fourteenth.
The town is, town meeting is on May fourteenth, that's correct. That said, that's not gonna be the town meeting where we're gonna be voting on the school budget. Typically, the meeting where we vote for the, for our budget, all of our budget, is in June. There is some monetary warrants in May, but those are not budget-related, those are related to free cash and some special town meeting items that are urgent. Okay, thank you all very much for coming, really appreciate it, and have a good night. So, we're gonna resume our school night meeting. What is on our...
Kind of like a round table. I like the round table.
Okay, we have the calendar, right? Is that the only item?
Yes, that's the only item.
Okay. So, it's gonna be a short meeting tonight. We have our 2018-19 school calendar to review. Do you need approval tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
If possible.
Yeah. What changed? I looked at it and it didn't really seem dramatically different.
So, there's a change from the March Professional Development Day moving to before school. That was a discussion amongst staff, that it would be potentially more impactful. And so, we have three days of professional development before the school year to get through all of our compliance training and those kinds of trainings in addition to instruction and curriculum and assessment. So, we have vetted the calendar through the union and received their feedback. The other change is graduation moving from the first week of June to the second. And really, that move returns Granby to a graduation date that was historical and was moved because of a road race conflict. And that road race never, doesn't occur anymore, and so, we're able to move graduation to the second week, which allows us to have the senior activities during the school year. So, we're excited about that.
Does that, does that mean that the seniors will be, what are they going out during the school year? Does that change?
Yes, it's, instead of the first weekend in June, I can't get out of this presentation some...
Yeah, that's the graduation, but, you know, seniors, their last day of school is, for instance, this year is the twenty-first, right? So, does that impact their last day of school?
So, you mean May twenty-first?
May twenty-first, yes.
Right. So, yes, so it's more like seniors' last day, and they would be taking finals in, I believe, the first week of June. So, let me just, I'm out of the presentation, so let me just get the calendar up.
So, they normally have that one week. Do they still have that one week this one?
So, graduation day would be the eighth. The finals are not listed, but I believe Principal Sullivan does have them having that last week for finals. I believe the finals would be the week of May twenty-seventh, but I can check.
I also noticed you didn't have the same round of half-days in March, and that's because you moved those to before the school. Okay, so that answers the question I was gonna ask.
Yep, yep. And all of the curriculum half-days are on Fridays, typically before vacation. Those are low enrollment days or low attendance days for us anyway. You know, parents, families, you know, taking advantage sometimes of trying to get out a little early ahead of a vacation, so it's also days that can be difficult for our staff to get coverage when we have a curriculum half-day sort of in the middle of the month for no good, for no apparent, you know, reason. So, this is meets a staff need as well.
And does that, does it align our days for seniors with other districts?
Yes, it does. Mm-hmm, yes.
Because I don't, I mean, to be honest, I don't want them to think that, hey, you know, suddenly I'm a senior and I'm not getting the same thing that everybody else before me got.
Right, mm-hmm, no, understood.
So, they are still getting their week, I guess, that first week of June or whatever it is now?
Yep.
Any questions on the calendar? Does this better align the PD days and all that too?
Yes, yes. Yep, and so, one of the discussions for shared services is if we have these days voted today, then we're gonna organize our professional development with Hadley and South, Hadley and Hatfield, so that we're providing some professional development for typically the groups of folks that we only have maybe one or two of, so our ELL teacher, our OTPT, Speech and Language people, they can, we can work together and provide, our nurses and nurse leaders, so we can provide some training throughout the, with share, sharing throughout the district. So, we're excited about that.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the eighteen-nineteen school year calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve the eighteen-nineteen school calendar.
Is there a second?
One second.
Any more comments, questions? Okay, hold on, favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Cheryl.
You're welcome.
So, the other thing that I wanted to bring up is the joint meeting request from the finance committee. So, chances are the select board would like to be part of that as well, even though this was directed to us initially. And the days that were given in order of preference, it says, May eighth, fifteenth, seventh, tenth, ninth, or sixteenth. Sixteenth is after the school, I mean, after the town meeting. So is the fifteenth. So, if our preference is really to have this meeting before that town meeting, which would be my preference, then we have the eighth, the seventh, the tenth, and the ninth in that order.
The seventh we have a school committee meeting.
Yes, we do.
So, we would do it after?
We can do that, or we can do it another day.
I can do any, I mean, the eighteenth... I can do any, I mean, the 8th works, too. If you want to do two meetings.
What do we have for our meeting on the 7th, anything big?
Uh, we have the strategic plan approval. We have some presentations for some grants that we've received.
The review proposal for the credit change.
Correct, yep, the finalization of that.
What is that?
Uh, the graduation requirement.
Oh, okay.
Discussion.
That's a pretty dense meeting right there.
Yeah. So the 7th probably is not, is not a good night. So that leaves us with the 8th, which may not be convenient for some of you. And then the 10th and the 9th, again, in that order.
What time are we?
Uh, probably the same time. We can do it a little bit earlier, if anyone's willing.
I can't do it earlier.
I have Arts Night on the 10th.
Yeah, I can't make the 10th. I think I can't do the 10th, I can, I can miss other things on the 8th.
You know, we could, going back to the 7th, the grant award presentation and Principal Sullivan's presentation of STEM and the, that, it certainly doesn't need a vote, it's just a presentation. So we could certainly move those. It's really information-only, so that would leave us with the strategic plan and the graduation, which you've already considered, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
Unless the 7th is bad for you, sorry. Unless the 7th is bad.
Well, we have a meeting.
Like, oops.
We have a meeting on the 7th anyway.
Right.
All right, so what are we saying?
We could do it on the 7th.
7th, by what time?
Uh, we're supposed to start it at 6, and do 6:30 instead?
For the 7th?
Yeah.
Well, don't we normally start at 6:30?
Yeah, we do start at 6:30, so... Should we start at 6, and then start the other meeting at 7? Can you make it before 6 o'clock?
Uh, I don't know what my schedule is. I, oh, yeah, I can, actually. I can do 6.
All right, so let's do our meeting on the 7th, 6. So one hour for our meeting, and 7 o'clock, let's have the joint meeting.
Mhm.
And we'll extend, well, we'll extend the invitation to both the Finance Committee and Select Board at the library.
The library.
The high school library?
High school library.
Can we get everybody around a table?
Yeah, if we do it in our old...
Yeah, probably in the old spot, yes.
That's actually easier to do.
Yeah, it's like how we do interviews, with the big tables all, yep.
So you're saying the School Committee meeting at 6, and then the joint meeting...
At 7.
Okay.
Or is it too much? I mean, if you think that...
No, and I think we could adjourn the, or suspend the School Committee meeting, and then if, and then finish the School Committee meeting after, if you had to.
Okay. All right, but 7 o'clock is good?
Yep.
Yeah.
Not earlier, okay.
Right.
So I'll, I'll get back to John, and let him know that we're good for May 7th, 7 o'clock. And then we'll go from there, and let everybody know. Is there anything else? So are we done with budget conversations, or is there anything else that we should talk about, any?
There's a lot more we need to talk about.
Because it doesn't, this doesn't really leave us a lot of time. So the reason why I'm asking is this, we're not approving the budget tonight. We have the joint meeting next week, but we have to approve that budget before, for the town meeting.
Well, I'm assuming that after this meeting on the 7th, we're going to have to consider what our next steps are, based on that conversation.
Yeah.
So we're going to have to meet again.
Yep.
So that we all come to a consensus and agreement and vote on whatever that is.
All right, is then, just to preempt it, since we can't go to the following Monday, that's the town meeting, is Wednesday the night for us good?
Yeah.
Is that...
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I'll have to skip something, but how much, how many do you want to meet?
Um, same time, 6:30?
Yeah, a minute. So I'll hop in or the other place, and let them know if they need to do a vote to go, 15 minutes.
Oh, you have another meeting in town?
About the 2:50, but that's, that's the only if they need me to go quarrel.
All right.
So I'll let them know, so if they readjust their agenda a little.
So I'll change this to 6, then thank you.
Did you say 6 o'clock on the night?
On Wednesday, 6:30.
6:30.
Yep.
Yep.
Yes. All right. Anything else, Cheryl?
Uh, I don't have anything.
Hey, we don't have a executive session tonight. So as promised, it is one of our shortest meetings then. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, good night.